Okay, if everyone wants to grab their seats, we're going to get started. Well, good morning, everyone, and thank you guys so much for being here today, day after a three-day weekend. Hope everyone had a good Labor Day. Um, Councilwoman Benny Guardado, this is our second round of meetings that we're doing around redistricting. As everyone knows, your guys' input is incredibly important. You guys now have two maps in front of you, where we need to make sure that we are representing all of you guys, that we're doing what you guys want us to do, that you guys get to choose who your councilperson is going to be for the next 10 years. Because this process will start again in 10 years. And whoever you guys choose, that's who you guys are struggling with. Just kidding. But thank you guys again for being here with us today. Um, and we're hoping to hear from everyone. We have about six people that have signed up to speak. Um, and hoping that you guys should tell your neighbors if anyone that wanted to come to the meeting but couldn't be here because they are working, they can also put in their comments online. Um, we know that we have our folks that are looking at those comments as well, and we're taking this very serious. Uh, so with that, I'm gonna hand the mic over to Ginger, and she is gonna take us through. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Guardado. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Thank you all for being here for the round two of our 2023 redistricting meeting. So we're glad to see everyone out this morning. Um, as the councilwoman said, my name is Ginger Spencer, and I'm one of the deputy city managers for the City of Phoenix. And with me here today, we have Denise Archibald, who's our city clerk. And then we also have Chris Meyer, who is our former city attorney and former city clerk as well.
He just loves that.
He does. He does. Um, so with that, I do want to just thank all of the city staff who are helping us out this morning. I also want to thank Elsie, who is doing our Spanish interpretation this morning. And then we also have Penny, who is out in the crowd, who is doing our sign language interpretation as well. And so just want to again thank all the city staff. And with that, I'll turn it over to our city clerk. Please.
All right, thank you, Ginger. Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much. I will talk a little bit today about the process. I know some of you are already familiar if you attended round one, but we'll just talk through it real quickly. So we are using the same process that we've used in the last three redistrictings in 1990, 2000, and 2010. And to ensure a professional and impartial process, we hired a consultant, and that is Preeti and Sam Mather, who is our at the end. They are with Arkbridge Consulting and Training, and they're from the Washington DC area. And they were selected through a procurement process that was approved by the city council. They are experts in redistricting. We did have an initial round one of community meetings in June, and so thank you if you did attend. And we did provide their information about, you know, the census data and what the current state is of our growth and population. And we also provided information about the redistricting process and how to participate and provide comments. And so we have been receiving comments throughout this process this entire time, not just in the meetings, but also by email and through the website. And there was also an opportunity for residents and members of the public to create their own maps, which we did also have. So we've had submissions for those maps. The ability to create and submit those maps was open until August 1st. And since then, the consultant then has reviewed those submittals, and they are now bringing forth two maps, Alternative A and Alternative B. And what we're looking for at this point is your input on both of these maps. We would like to hear from you, what you think about Alternative A and Alternative B. And more so than picking one map over the other, we're hoping to get your feedback about what you like about each map and why, and then any concerns that you may have about each of these maps. And so once the round two redistricting community meetings are over, which is this week basically and through the 11th, then we will have, the consultant will take back any additional feedback that we receive, and then they will prepare the final map or maps for the council to make a decision on the final boundaries for this redistricting process. And these new boundaries will become effective in January of 2024, just in time for the November 2024 election. And then please note, we do have a lot of information on our website, phoenixredistricting.com. And then you can also submit your comments still through email, even after this meeting, at phoenixredistricting@phoenix.gov. And we have a lot of information on the tables in the back, including maps and other ways to comment. There is a comment sheet that you can submit to us today with your comments, or you can provide it to us through email later, or you can call us and provide those comments as well on the phone. And with that, I will turn it over to Preeti.
Hello, good morning, everyone. It's so good to see you. And just like the councilwoman and Ginger, everyone said, I hope you all had a good weekend, and now you're ready to dive into redistricting round two. All right, so I have a PowerPoint presentation that I'm going to go through. And if you have any questions, just let me know. All right. Just a little refresher from...
Can you hold the mic a little closer?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure. Just a little refresher from round one. I just wanted to give you the 2010 numbers and the 2020 numbers. So if you look at the top part of the chart, we tell you, you know, that your current districts are based on the 2010 numbers. And if we compare them against the 2020 numbers, the concept of maximum deviation that we have talked about, that one, maximum deviation, is now 14.45. And as you know, if you look at the numbers, that some districts have more population and some have less. So having said that, we are now going to show you the redistricting guidelines. And more so, I want to show you this bar, which shows that, you know, the districts which are under the ideal population. So the population of the City of Phoenix is 1.6 million. And when we divide it by eight districts, so we get this number, which is the ideal population, which is 201,017. And you can see that any district which is lower than this dotted line, they need to have more population, and the others who are more, they need to have less. So how do we do this? So the city has set these redistricting guidelines. And there are some legal requirements, and then there are other requirements. So I'll just go over them briefly, because we use these to present you the two alternative plans. The first one is equal population. And according to the guidelines, the maximum deviation, which looks at the difference between the most populated and the least populated district, should be less than 5%. And each individual district, the difference should be less than, under 1%. And of course, the Voting Rights Act, we need to comply with that, and we need to preserve minority voting rights. So those are the legal requirements. And now if we look at other guidelines, we have all these which are listed over here. Communities of interest, compactness, contiguity, preservation of core of current districts, continuity of representation, which means that we do not draw the districts such that the current incumbent is drawn out of it. So, and preservation of political subdivisions. And here, I just want to emphasize that we are using the county precincts as the political subdivisions, and we have tried to keep them together as much as possible.
As a political subdivision?
The county.
I'm not really using as a political subdivision.
County precincts.
It's like voting out.
Yeah, precincts, which is, yeah, which have been provided to us by the county. All right? So now I want to talk about, you know, Denise had said that we provided the community with an opportunity to draw their own maps. And that period was from June 29th, soon after our round one meetings till August 1st. And the community did respond. So we get 36 submissions, which were drawn by the community. Now, out of these, there were 16 community members who authored multiple submissions. So we got 36 maps. And what we did was, we labeled them as COP, City of Phoenix Submission 01 to 36. And we numbered them based on when we received them. So all submissions, we evaluated them for the redistricting criteria that I just talked about. Now, final selections, for finally selecting plans, we looked at compactness, how many precincts were split, what the maximum deviation was, and also, do we still have the same minority-majority makeup of the districts? So with this, we have two plans that I'm going to show to you today, and we call them Alternative A and Alternative B. So here, and Alternative A came out of the feedback that we received from round one meetings. And that is Alternative A. Alternative B was selected from one of the county, one of the community submissions. And we made some minor tweaks just to ensure that it complied with all the redistricting criteria. So just some little numbers that you see over here. We looked at maximum deviation that we are showing you. 14.45 is what we have for the current districts, and we know that that is not compliant. So, and the number of precincts that were split, compactness core, and number of precincts that were moved. So here, we have Alternative A, and the maximum deviation is 1.38%, which is under 5% that we have set in our criteria. And then the precinct splits is 25, which is less than what we have in our current districts. The compactness core is a little bit better. And the number of precincts that we have moved. And now if you were to think of, what are we comparing it? We are comparing it with the current districts. So 22 precincts were moved. And then Alternative B, it has a maximum deviation of 1.9 with 42 precinct splits, which is more than what we currently have, and which is more than what Alternative A says. And then we have a compactness core of 25%, and the number of precincts that were moved is 33. So we had to do these statistical analyses so that we could come up with the potentially the best plan that we could use for further evaluation. So with that, now I'm going to take you to Alternative A. And on one side, you see the map. And on the right-hand side, you're seeing all the precincts which were, which are now in a different district compared to the current map. So here, I'll show you. We'll have more detail. Yeah, I'll show you in more detail. And if you're worrying about this PowerPoint, it's going to be on the website soon, so don't worry about it. It'll be there. So now if you were to see the syntax of our change, so D2, that means when it's currently in D2, and it's going to D3. So that is the syntax. And I don't want you to strain your eyes anymore because I have more zoomed-in versions, so. And then another important aspect was majority population by district. As you all know, that the City of Phoenix has four majority Hispanic districts and four majority non-Hispanic white districts. So we wanted to make sure that we continue with that same pattern, if possible. So here, you can see that we have the current districts, total population, voting age population, and then we have the numbers for Alternative A. And all you need to get from this slide is that we are still maintaining Alternative A still offers four majority Hispanic districts and four majority non-Hispanic white districts. And we have highlighted them, so. Now, Alternative B, and the same structure here we are giving you. And I know it's hard to see, but we will go through each one of them for districts four and five, so you can see that in more detail. Okay? And so I'm going to go to the comparative analysis of districts of District 4 first, and then I'll show you District 5. And we'll compare A and B, so you can see better. So now if you want to look at Alternative A, and hopefully you can read this better and you can see it better. So on this slide, we are just telling you that Alternative A is making seven changes, and Alternative B is making 13 changes, and the changes are listed here. And you can see the shape. The black and white line that you're seeing is your current districts. And the red line or the color, the red outline or the color, is what is being proposed. Make sense? Okay. And the same thing, if you look at this side, we have Alternative A. This side, you have Alternative B. And we have put this slide together so that you can see them side by side. Okay? So now let's look into just Alternative A and look at things in more detail. So here, this is an overview map, and we have more zoomed in for each of the changes. And then these are the precincts and the change. Okay? So let's look at this change, which is up north here to District 4. You can see that the precincts here we have is Marlette. And if you look at Marlette, uh, Marlette over here, it's currently in D5, and it's now being assigned to D4. So if you live in Marlette precinct, this change will affect you. So here, and then, so we have Marlette here, and then we have a piece of Solano precinct, which is currently in D5, and it's now being assigned to D4. So if you look at Solano, Solano is like split, and now it's like, the part which is in D5 is being assigned to D4 in an attempt to make things more compact and more...
Compact, yeah.
And then if you look at this part here, where this is a new precinct, this one here, if you look at the detail, you can see that Creighton precinct. And you can see it over here. It's currently in D8, and it's now being assigned to D4. So here, and you can see on the overview map, you can see that this is a precinct which was in D8, and it's being assigned to D4. So now we move on. So we have covered Creighton. We have covered Marlette, Solano. Now let's look at Marble Creek, which is over here. So here we have Marble Creek, and we have Culver precincts. And the whole of Culver, if you look at Culver precinct, it's currently in D4, and it's being assigned to D7. And so is a part of Marlette Creek is, or Marble Creek, I'm sorry. Marble Creek is being assigned to D7. So here, these are the changes. And then we have Greenwood precinct, and we have where we have taken the part only till the highway, the interstate. And the same thing with Encanto precinct. So we took this part and this little part, and that was assigned to D7. So these are the changes in Alternative A for District 4. Making sense? Can you follow what I'm saying? Okay, awesome. So now I'm going to show you, and these are the changes that I had highlighted. So I'm going to show you the same changes for Alternative B, District 4. So here we have the whole map, the map overview. And the red line shows you that these are the changes which are being proposed here. And you can see that we have Colonnade. Colonnade is currently split in four and five, okay? But now it's going to be completely in D6. Then we have Granada, which is over here. Granada was in D4, and it's now being split in four and five. Okay? Then we have Hall precinct, which is over here. Hall precinct. Then we have Meadowbrook, Solano, and Xavier precincts, which are all over here, and they are being assigned differently from their current district. Okay? Now, if we look at the bottom part of D4, you can see Capital School, which is over here. And it was in D7, but it's going to D4. And you can see by the color for D4, it's like a brownish-bage color. So here, it's currently in D7, but being assigned to D4. Then we look at Greenwood precinct. And Greenwood precinct here, in Alternative A, if you remember, it was just going till the highway, but here they are taking the whole of it. Okay? And then Encanto precinct, or wait a second, yeah. Greenwood precinct. Then I talked about Marble Creek, which is here. Moya. Then we have Tumbleweed precinct, which a part of it is being taken, so it's being split between four and seven. And then we have Bestwood Ho, part of it. So it's currently split in seven and eight, and now it's in four and seven. So those are the changes for District 4. And now we move on to D5. All right? So if you look at D5 here, this is the overview map for Alternative A and B. So Alternative A is proposing nine changes, and Alternative B is proposing 11 changes. And you can see that all these changes, so we'll go into detail and not just look at this slide. So it's a pretty packed slide because we wanted to show you the location of the precincts as well as the changes. So here, in Alternative A, if you look at this little part of Harmon precinct, that is what we are proposing. And then we are also saying, so here, if you look at Harmon, from D5, it's now going to be split between D1 and D5. Okay? Then Marlette is being given from D5 to D4. Orangewood, Solano, part of Solano, Sunny High, which is here, and Townley, which is over here. So these precincts, or Townley, the whole of it is currently in D5, but being assigned to D3. And you can see the same with Sunny High. Sunny High is currently split, but we are putting it together in D3. So that is, those are the changes up here, which we are showing on this slide. And then when you come to this part, which is the western part of the district, you're seeing that Cora, Peña, and Desert Sky, which are currently in D7, are being assigned to D5. And the reason being, if you recall, D7 had the most 17,000 more people, so it had to give up, so we took from there. And we, D3 was in need, so we did the balancing. And that is what Alternative A, District 5, changes are. So now I'll show you the Alternative B. So in Alternative B, we have some different, slightly different changes. They bring down District 1 further south. And you can see that Harmont is there, and there is Augusta, which is there. Glen, Glen, which is currently in D3, but now being split in five and six. And you can see Granada, which is over here. And you can see Harmont. And all these precincts over here, this is what Alternative B is proposing. So it's taking more precincts from D5 and assigning them to D1. And D5 does have more population. If you remember, it was over the bar. So it could give, but then it also took precincts here from D7, which you can see Cora and Desert Sky. And Peña is still split, just a little different split. So these are the changes for Districts 4 and 5. And so now, I'll just show you Districts 4 and 5 one more time so that you can see that Alternative A takes it a little bit north, and it also gets a little bit east also by taking Creighton. And then if you look at Alternative B, you can see the changes there. And we have also given you the statistics so you can decide what works better, what is better for the city as a whole, and what is better for you as an individual or as for your community. So now with this, I'm going to turn the floor to you so that we can hear from you, because you are an important part of this process, the redistricting process. And here, we have the questions.
So we will start with Debra LaPlante.
Thank you. Good morning, and thank you for the presentations. I attended the round one meetings. I represent North Glen Square Neighborhood Association, which is currently in D5. We are in that Harmont district. And so I was very adamant about looking at the maps. And I know you don't want just the map information, but I'm looking at things like precincts going from 25 to 42 that are being split. So I know when we split classrooms up in school, that doesn't necessarily make more sense to have those kinds of splits when we already have built community. I'm also looking, you know, how many precincts that you are doing. The deviation seems to be going up as well when you use Map B, so I'm not as concerned, I'm not as happy with that. But I know that it's easier for neighborhoods that have volunteer groups, which we do. We have 1,400 homes in North Glen Square Association. We're a very active association. We really advocate for our neighbors. And we've done lots of things with the D5. We've had lots of cleanups. We, I mean, there's just a lot of communication with the staff. And when I think about our volunteers having to split their attention between districts and having to deal with two different council members, you know, then I'm looking at, well, do you live in this district? And do you live in this district? Even though you're in our location of an association in which we communicate a lot. We have monthly meetings. So, but I'm looking just overall in the city, and it doesn't seem to make much sense to have maps that give us more division of precincts rather than fewer divisions of precincts. So I would ask you to look at a map that's more aligned with fewer things having to change than more things. We know people don't like change anyway. So we know that some things have to change, but when you change that many people... And it didn't look like you had that many responses from round one. You know, when you look at the number of people that live in Phoenix, the number of people that responded, even though you put that information out, is not as great. So I would consider, hopefully that you would consider the things that are happening in Map A, because they seem to make more sense for the precincts, and they seem to make more sense for neighborhoods. So I would hope you would consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Now we are going to go to Julie. Maybe.
My name is Julie DeGraffan Reed, and I also live in the Harmont District. We would be that little bitty piece of red that would be now going to District number 1. I am also the head of our HOA, which has 24 homes. And I like to think that it's fairly representative of the area, or at least the new area. This area used to be mainly white, bigger homes. Of our 24 homes, 12 of them are owned by minorities. And when I say minorities, I'm talking about Africans from Africa, Vietnamese from Vietnam, Mexicans from Mexico. So it's not just Hispanic. What I'm afraid of is that, because we're just that little tail end, and District 1 only has, it has fewer Hispanics. It has fewer minorities that will get lost. Right now, these people are comfortable in their neighborhood with things going on in their neighborhood. And if we have to do things more in line with District 1, which goes all the way up to Anthem, we just won't, we'll get lost. And I realize that they need to also have more representation, and that's part of this. But what I'm saying is that for at least, since it's just such a little section, does it really need to be moved? Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Now we will go to David Curry.
It's on. Oh, it is on, okay. Good morning, everyone, yes. We've got to start again because I don't think we've got anything. Good morning, everyone. I would like to say a few words at one time with the interpreter as my voice. And then I'll move on. Okay. Everyone, I like the idea. Everybody, that every minority group. Put down when you're, you know. That's what my dream is, that everybody's considered. Just like women and men. Unequal, and now moving up to equal. Going above and behind you, but equal. Trying to say on that. Equality for everybody. In my experience, it has not been that. This is a majority in my district is Hispanic. And they are way bigger than that. Voices and opinions from the rest of us is nothing. Yes, it's all just. When we talk and speak, they object and assault. Doctors, I'm a doctor, PhD. And they don't seem to care. What's your license? English is my second language, of course. Very skilled in five languages. You've got to balance this out, and I get all these criticisms. Talking with people there, the representatives. Oh, that gets all screwed up. Want the maps and stuff for developing the areas. So we need to have new representatives. And the representatives are focused on over in Maryvale, in that area. Which I've been in that district. West of Arrowhead Avenue, and between 7 and Arrowhead. And it's District 5, and has been, so. Have to look at the other Districts 4. I don't know about that. Is enthusiastically wanting to be elected and stuff. But doesn't, doesn't seem to be in the opposite. So, okay. And then. What might happen? With the new district, my, what would happen would be what? That you would be in a new district. Yes. And then, I don't know. I don't have any thinking. I don't know their system. I don't know how they do things. I looked at the maps over here, and. It starts August 1st, from what you said. That's when those. So what's going on? Procedure do we follow? I am confused. Not representing any group, just myself.
What district is he currently in? 5? Okay.
Yes, 5.
Okay. And what map does he like, A or B? Okay. So neither one?
They're influencing the number of Hispanics to be. And they have different concerns from mine.
So I want to be clear on something. There's an increase of minorities. It's not just Hispanics. So I think we need to be careful about that. There's an increase of just a minority-majority district. I know the majority could be, we have more Hispanics, but it's a diverse group in an area, so.
I'm not feeling that. Yeah, not at all. That's just from my experience. My representative is just ignoring us, my group. Appeal to you. Check it again and watch your adjustments. Thank you.
Sir, just wanted to say thank you for your comments. We have taken those down. We will take it into consideration. And then if you would like, we can also have staff talk with you after we take all of the questions and comments. Okay, we'll be sure to do that. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will go to Bash Herrera.
Hello, my name is Bash. I live in District 5, on the east side of the district, pretty close to the border. So I support Plan A because it keeps the district more intact in terms of the neighborhoods that have more in common, I think are kept better intact with Plan A. I grew up on the west side, so I know the area pretty well. But yeah, I support Plan A.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Victoria Stahl.
Hello. Hello, my name's Victoria. I, similar to Bash, have actually lived in the west side of Phoenix and Maryvale my entire life. I've lived in the same square mile my entire life. My grandparents bought a house there two days before I was born. And so I have literally grown up in District 5. Currently, my grandparents are not in the same district despite living six blocks away from me. I testified during round one about this and shared, you know, the fact that my family is literally divided by district lines. My community, many of my friends who I went to high school with and who I went to elementary school with are divided by these lines, people I grew up with. The way the lines are currently drawn, and in Plan B, this division is kept. And it not only separates communities from each other, it separates families, right? When we vote during elections, we have to, you know, study multiple ballot initiatives, and we have to study multiple, you know, Congress or council people. And so, you know, voting together as a family and, you know, addressing issues if they have an issue on their street. And my grandparents need help going to the city. I now have to go to a district, a different city council district to get that help for them, right? And so that's why I am here supporting Plan A. It not only keeps my community together, it keeps my precinct together. And overall, I think, like, it keeps communities together. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Magdalena Acosta.
Hi, good morning. My name is Magdalena Acosta. I currently live on the border of District 5 and 7. And I really support Plan A because I, to me, it just makes sense to keep, to connect this to this district. It's just, we have so much in common that it's, a lot of work can be done there. So, thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker, Billy Schultz.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. I want to just compliment all of you that I think the process is very comprehensive. And the product. Thank you for this opportunity and for the process. I think it's a very comprehensive process, and it'll end up with a good product. I live in District 4. Under any of these maps, I'll stay in District 4. And we're very happy with Councilwoman Pastor. And when she goes to. Oh. I live in District 4. We're very happy with Councilwoman Pastor. And when she goes to Congress, we'll still be represented by her. But I also represent the Phoenix Community Alliance. And we have a little redistricting subcommittee. So we've been following this to some degree. And I just want to say that we're okay with either A or B. It may not be what you're looking for, but we really are concerned about the downtown core. There's just minor changes to that. And also the historic districts around the downtown core. And it's a little difficult not thinking, when you're thinking of where you live and your precinct, then it's easy to figure out what's happening. When you're thinking of an area, it's not so easy. So I just have a question, and I could stay after, not to waste everyone's time, but can, is there a zoom in where you can see like street names where I can see what's exactly happening to the downtown core and historic districts? And if someone could help me with that afterwards, I'd be thankful. Thank you.
I just wanted to respond to this gentleman's question. And yes, there is, if you go to phoenixredistricting.com, you go to Maps, and when you look at interactive maps, when you click on that, you should be able to zoom in. You should be able to type in your address, and you can see exactly where it is. You'll be able to see the precincts, Alternative A and Alternative B. So please use that, and hopefully it'll answer your questions.
Hi, my name is Marissa, and I actually am currently in District 8. So I'm in, I guess, opposition to the majority here. I vote for Alternative B. I currently work with the block watch, and we have been working with our councilperson as well as the previous councilperson in our district. We have formed a coalition. And if we were redistricted to 4, as in proposal Alternative A, we would be alienated from our coalition because we would no longer have the same councilperson. Even though we're dealing with the same things in the same communities, the same problems, you know, that we're working on, we would now have to start from scratch with a brand-new district of people that we don't know, with a new district person that we don't know. And so all of our work would basically kind of have to start over once again. And we are the ones, our particular block watch is the ones that has been heading up the things that are going on with our coalition and the block watch. So I vote for Alternative B.
So historic districts, they're still pretty much in District 4. Maybe three neighborhoods, four neighborhoods that are on the border. So the historic districts pretty much stay together. And I'm assuming you're speaking about Creighton?
Creighton.
Yeah. I figured it out real quick. The other thing is that I just want to say is, and I know I probably took over, but, Councilwoman Laura Bustow, I'm sorry I was late. But what I want to say is there are many districts that overlap, and we work very closely together and align very closely together. I happen to sit, District 4 happens to sit in the heart of the city and the core. So I work with all districts who border me. And we work collectively together as we border because I would say Green Gables is one of the districts where Green Gables is in 4, and Green Gables is also in 8. And we work collectively together with the councilpeople and the issues that are happening. So I know that change is hard. I know it's different. Believe us, believe me, if we probably didn't have to go through this, we would, we're settled in our districts. And so we, we, as councilpeople, will also face new change, new communities, and new pieces. So it's not just the community, but it's also the council and how we operate. So I just want to put that out there, that we're in the same situation. We feel the same, but we do this. And it's part of the process, and we embrace it. So I'm just putting that out there for everybody.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hello, my name's Cartlina. I am with the Alta Vista Neighborhood Block Watch. And I just wanted to show support for Alternative A. I'm in agreeance with, let's keep it, keep it simple, sister. It's like something I live by. And I see less deviation, less split precincts, and that just makes so much sense to me. I'm, I am sympathetic to having an organization with the split precinct because Alta Vista, we have District 4 and 5. We have to make double phone calls, you know. But I think we can give you guys a little bit of credit and know we think you're going to take care of us either way. You know, for a district, if we have a mixed district or not in terms of organizations. But I also wanted to say, I really liked the comment on a family level over here about, I was sympathetic to that, having to deal with family in two different split districts when you, you know, are partial to one. But I just liked that comment on a human level, you know. But I support Alternative A because it just makes more sense to me. Simple, so, thank you.
Thank you. I also want to say in split districts, double the trouble. Because the way the council works, the way the council works, it's nine votes. So if there's already two of us working on a project together, it's much easier for us to get three more votes versus me single trying to get four votes. And the two of us, and it's with everybody, we partner up, and then we move to engage our other counterparts or colleagues then to help with our cause. So that's kind of, you know, that's the insider world, but I'm just saying double the trouble. Downtown, I got some great history about the downtown. They want three. And the issue, the dynamics of three is that there's three collective voices looking at downtown to be able then to make some of the shifts that need to happen. As you see downtown today, it wouldn't have happened if there weren't three. So that's kind of the philosophy in a way, if you look at it in a different view, as to why sometimes, and it's not, these guys are just purely doing numbers. These guys are just purely, they have no. These guys are just purely, they have no say in the precincts, no say in it. They're just putting in the numbers and say, what does this map look like? And so that's why we have these meetings. So thank you for engaging and telling us. However, sometimes we don't always get what we want, like my dad used to teach me from the Rolling Stones. But, but we can try. And we also usually get to a happy space and compromise, so.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else that would like to speak? No, I don't see any hands. Okay, well, thank you guys all so much for coming. And again, if you guys feel strongly about one map or the other, get your neighbors, get folks to put in their virtual comments. I know that we're still taking those. Up until when are we taking those comments? Until the whole process is over, September 26. So put in your comments, let us know what you guys think. And thank you guys all so much for coming today. Thank you. Have a, have a great week.